Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City Council meeting for May 3rd, 2010. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman Needham.
Present.
Alderman Larson.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conken.
Present.
Alderman Moisio.
Present.
Alderman Figueroa.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
All present, thank you. Could we stand for a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll. Roll call, please. Oh, we did that already, sorry. Apologize. Um, Mayor's comments, okay? First up, I've received a request from the family of John Baylen regarding the naming of a street in honor of his sixty years of public service. His relatives have decided and asked that 10th Street, or portion thereof, would be the appropriate location, so we will move forward with this over the next few weeks. If this has to be done through committee, I would ask that Alderman Figueroa take it through judiciary and process the request as part of his regular agenda. I've talked to Mr. Tom Haggerty, our Director of Public Works, about placing signs acknowledging the accomplishments of the Waukegan High School Bulldogs' boys basketball team at several of our entry points into Waukegan. We hope to have these up within the next thirty days. We have set a date for my State of the City address, which will be held at the Genesee Theater and will be open to the public. It will be on Thursday, May 20th, at seven o'clock. I promise you, it will be an interesting and informative event, so I'm asking everyone here to come and let your friends and neighbors know that this is going to be happening. It will be, obviously, published in the papers as well. I'm putting forward an initiative that will remove liquor sales from all gas stations in the city of Waukegan. I've spoken to most of the Aldermen about this, and during the conversation, it was evident that there seemed to be broad-based support for such an initiative. It makes no sense to provide alcohol at the same location where people are fueling their vehicles. I believe, as do many in Waukegan, that it sends the wrong message about driver responsibility and public safety. There are six stations in Waukegan that currently have alcohol in the minimart portion, and this gives a small minority an economic advantage over all the other stations that rely on gas and non-liquor goods to make a living. It is a matter of public safety and fundamental fairness to all service station owners. I hope that those of you who express your support for this effort will vote accordingly once it reaches the City Council for ratification. I want to ask Judiciary Chair Tony Figueroa to put this item on his next scheduled meeting agenda, so it can make it to the Council as soon as possible. I anticipate a one-year timeframe for the licenses to expire and to give owners time to prepare and adapt to a new business model. The demolition of the OMC plant is beginning today. I would encourage everyone to go down and take one last look at the structure before it is totally gone. I want to reiterate that this would not have been possible were not for the efforts of our partners and allies in the Environmental Protection Agency, particularly our liaison there, Mr. Kevin Adler. The Latino Film Festival went off without a hitch and was very successful. We had a slate of three quality films and even hosted one of the directors on Saturday night for discussion following the screening. Everyone that came was impressed by the event and lavish praise on the beautiful Genesee Theater. I want to thank all of the people who worked so hard to make this effort a reality and to the generous sponsors who made the whole thing possible. I also want to thank Alderman Figueroa for attending and representing the City Council at the event. I want to thank the Friends of the Waukegan Beach and Former Inmates Striving Together, or FIST, as they are known by acronym, for all their hard work over the weekend in the beach cleanup effort. FIST has been moving their members around the community and very quietly working to help clean up our downtown and other locations, such as alleyways behind businesses where garbage and debris have been accumulating. They are to be commended for the hard work they are putting in by donating their labor, but also for working with individuals who have been incarcerated or have struggled with addictions. Lastly, I want to speak to all the parents of school-aged children in Waukegan. One of our unions, the Service Employee International Union, has demanded that we fire all of our crossing guards because they contend that they are part-time employees and that their contract with the city requires us to lay off all part-time personnel before we lay off regular full-time employees. I can tell you, in this instance, that will not happen. The city will fight this unreasonable and potentially dangerous demand with every weapon we have available to us. I am asking all parents to protest this demand to your respective Alderman and to come to the next City Council meeting to express your concerns about this important Now, we'll go to audience time, and I've mixed the signup sheet in here. Bear with me a second. First up is Mr. Fred Barstow, 800 Clayton Street in Waukegan. If you could come to the podium, please, Fred.
(inaudible)
I'm sorry, Alderman.
Your Honor, aren't those, and maybe someone can help us out, but isn't that some of the negotiation that's going on? Should that be not exposed?
Actually...
I'm asking, I'm just asking.
That is a request that has been made public.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I...
And I felt that it was appropriate, because of the safety of the people and our children...
And I agree with you.
...that we needed to address this issue and get out in front of it, and that's why it's before us right now. Mr. Barstow.
Thank you, Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen, Alderman, Alderwoman. I come before you because I went through channels and never got anywhere. The last administration had a chief engineer who I gave permission to store concrete that they put in a ravine below my house to raise the level of the river, so that the sewer pipe there would not be exposed. Well, unfortunately, the engineer should have known that when you raise a river, it's going to find somewhere to go. So what happened is it's knocked down trees, and it's taken out of tons of dirt next to my home. And when it starts raining, I get a little bit anxious. I'm wondering if I'm going to be tumbling down a hill at the middle of the night. And I have gone through all the channels, but I need the Alderman's help, I need the Mayor's help, and I think we ought to make good what the mistakes of the past were. I think we ought to have engineering come down there, and if they can't fix it, then they maybe ought to get a consultant to come down there and figure out how to fix that. But I would like to have that taken care of, Mayor, and thank you.
Okay, we will talk to the engineer tomorrow and ask him to get down there, take a look at it as soon as possible. It may take us a few days, but we will get back on it. And I see Ron nodding his head back there, so thanks, Ron. I'm glad you're here to hear that request firsthand. Next up would be Mr. Jack Burleson, 35845 North Northern in Waukegan Township. Mr. Burleson.
Jack Burleson, co-president of Citizens Against Annexation, Forced Annexation by Waukegan. I come to you tonight with somewhat of a personal matter. My property does border your city now. I was, there was an attempted robbery on my property this past week that my son and I foiled. We came up, we had a, got the license plate number, the description of the car, and the description of the person. We called our fine Sheriff's Department, they were there within six minutes. Because of the direction that the car was going, headed from your city limits back into your city limits, the Sheriff's Department called your police department. And this time, I'd like to say, this in no way cast any aspersion on any of the fine police or fire officers of the city of Waukegan. After the Sheriff's Department had two people on my property within six minutes and two people in pursuit of the perpetrator, they even went to the person's property, had the car. They could not arrest anyone at the house because there was four people who matched the description in the house up at that hour of the night. Long story shorter, there was four sheriff's cars at my property within six minutes, and it was twenty-two minutes before the first Waukegan squad became available in Waukegan to go to that address. Now, I don't know if there was something going on in the city, but with plans to work these officers twelve hours a day, which is going to make them very irritable, and plans to cut five people from the fire department, which doesn't include some non-fire personnel who are still on the fireman's payroll that do inspections that the firemen used to do, those people are being maintained, but they're firing people who would actually save your lives and could easily do the other jobs also. These are all major concerns that need to be addressed before anyone, especially my coalition, would want to be annexed into the city of Waukegan. Like I say, this is no aspersions on the fine people. I just think that it would be great if we could make the cuts somewhere besides in a politically motivated fire and police department, because that's what gets the cities up, and you can raise taxes when you say you're going to lay off fire and police, or you can't if you say you're going to lay off secretaries. If you'd bear with me just one more second on a personal note to one member of the Alderman. He confronted my daughter-in-law in a private setting, and I believe it to be harassment because he went up to her and said, "Oh, your big man thinks your old man thinks he's And he thought how funny it was that he said, "Welcome to Waukegan," the first time I come here and pled my case before you. With, if I was a member of the Sixth Ward, I would be embarrassed, and if I didn't vote this man out in April, I would be ashamed.
Mr. Burleson, that's not allowed. Thank you for speaking, though. All right. Mr. Harold Beedling, 1602 Brookside Avenue, Waukegan.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Harold Beedling, I live at 1602 Brookside Avenue, Waukegan. I am here for, I think I've been here for the last three years, maybe more. July 4th is coming up once again, and I'm tired of my neighborhood reenacting the Civil War every Fourth of July. These things are against the law, and the smoke hangs in the air, they've caught houses on fire, the police do nothing. I'm sure at your direction, ladies and gentlemen, I think we have a very good police department in this community, but they're only as effective as the City Council and the mayor allow them to be. Is this going to go on again this year? People buy thousands and thousands of dollars of fireworks, they light them off with impunity till all hours of the night, right next door to my eighty-nine-year-old mother's unit. I have a duplex. Is this going to happen again this year, or are we going to enforce the laws? Or you guys act like the federal government where you don't enforce the laws. I'm wondering what's going to go on here. Number two, I live a simple life. I have no air conditioning, I acclimate to the seasons. My windows and doors are open, it doesn't even matter in the wintertime because my windows rattle with the loud boom-boom-boom-boom-boom music. And you know what? Once again, my police department won't tell me anything because I'm sure they're directed not to, but they say that they write hundreds of tickets every year. Who do I talk to to find the record of those hundreds of tickets that were written in 2009? Where would I direct that inquiry? Because I'd like to know how many tickets were written, what was the disposition of the cases afterwards? We have to do something about this. This community is becoming unlivable. You want people to move in? Well, you know what? There's houses for sale across the street from me, right next door. Maybe a family comes in, all they need to do is hear a few cars come down the street, and they wonder what the heck is going on in this community. I drive around all over Lake County, I travel all around. I do not hear that problem in other communities. I do hear it here and in North Chicago. When are we going to start enforcing our laws here? Who do I talk to? I'd like to see a record of the tickets written in 2009. Who would I ask?
Mr. Beedling, you can FOIA through the Clerk's office.
FOIA?
That's correct.
This is America. Why do I have to file a request? Why can't I just go in and ask?
That is the way of asking.
Are we going to do anything about the fireworks this year?
Mr. Beedling, are you finished with your comments?
I'm not sure, I'm thinking.
You have twenty-five seconds left.
Twenty-five seconds. We're spending a lot of money in this community. If it were up to me, I think we should have an industrial lakefront because anybody with half a brain understands that no one is going to buy a condo on our lakefront. That's never going to happen. We need to turn the corner, we need to turn around right now and encourage business on the lakefront. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beedling. Mr. Chris Blanks, 409 Oak Street, Waukegan.
Chris Blanks, 409 Oak Street, Waukegan. I know you opened the meeting up, speaking on the basis of safety regarding the youth in the community. Right now, we're having a, there's a water park that's been refurbished over the First Ward, where it used to be Bet, where it's Bet Rosen Park. There's a water park that's being put there. What I wanted to make mention of with that, respect to that, is right now, we already have an issue with speeding from Martin Luther King Drive coming down to, I mean, on Liberty coming to Oak Street. There's a stop sign right there at the corner of Liberty and Oak. In many instances, I've seen people actually do a roll and stop and run the stop sign. What I would like to propose to the city, I don't know what the policy is on speed deterrents or speed bumps, but with this new water park being built, there's going to be a high number of youth, children, that is going to be going, crossing the street in that area. And I would like to request that some, that some sense of speed deterrents be put in there to curb the number of cars and the speed, because we had a young man that was, we had a young child that was hit right there on Oak Street, I think it was a couple of years ago on a bicycle. So in the event to try to prevent that from happening with this new water park, I would like the city to take seriously into consideration to put something in place to deter the number of speeding cars in that area. And on a closing note, it has been brought to my attention, more than on a couple occasions, that some of the, a couple of the elected officials had state-claimed to getting me a job on one of the community's construction sites. Matter of fact, it's in the same area of where I'm speaking of now, at the Bet Rosen Park area. And what I'd like to say to that is I've been working construction now for twenty years, and every job that I have acquired, I've had to, every job I've gotten, every single job I've gotten, I've had to fight to get it or fight to keep it, whether it be through diplomacy and talking, or whether it be through protesting. Every job I've gotten helped others to get, that is usually how it have happened. And this is not to point fingers at any particular person, but I just want to say that in getting that job that I have right now, without taking up any too much of time, with getting that job I've gotten right now, nothing has been different. I've had to fight to get that job, and, but there has been some that feel that I owe them a debt of gratitude, and one of the elected officials made mention of that. So in short...
Mr. Blanks, I'm sorry, you've gone past the three-minute point. I apologize for the, we're holding the audience to three minutes.
Well, the ones before me. Can I ask for an extension for thirty seconds?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So in that thirty-second time, I just want to say that the jobs that I've gotten and where I'm at right now, I don't think it was, like, given out of what I would consider with me having to bring to the attention of some of the, what I was saying. To have to bring to the attention as to where some, to some of the people that I had, they had to correct. I can't really write now, I guess I'm a little tired. I hadn't too long ago got out. But I would just want to say that basically, in getting that job, nobody gave it to me. I had to come out, I had to bring that to some of the people to correct some of the error they raised, which there was not enough of people out of the community on the job. Also, I had to point out the fact that some of the workers that was on that job site were from Kenosha and not from that area. So in pointing that out is how I've been able to acquire that job, and when pointing people out that was wrong, that job and other jobs. So right now, let me apologize, I'm a little bit tired, you know, if I sound like I'm rambling, but I just wanted to make that point, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanks. Okay, that concludes our public conference. We now make a motion to approve... Make a motion to approve the minutes of April 19th, 2010, regular meeting, executive session minutes, and special meeting minutes of April 26th, 2010. Motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Figueroa. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you. We'll do resolutions and proclamations, and then we will be going into executive session. Normally, we hold the executive session for the end of the meeting, but because of other items of business that are on the agenda tonight, we need to go into executive session a little bit earlier. Under resolutions and proclamations, we have a resolution for the Prime Minister, the Honorable Dean O'Bearrow from Belize, which has been written up and will be forwarded to the Prime Minister at a later time. We have a Resolution B, which is instituting a hiring freeze for fiscal year 2011. And just basically, I'll read real quickly. Whereas the city of Waukegan recognizes the need to institute certain controls related to hiring for the upcoming fiscal year, and whereas a mechanism needs to be enacted in order to ensure both uniformity of application of such a hiring freeze, as well as allow for exceptions related to certain exigent circumstances, now therefore be it resolved by the City of Council of Waukegan, Illinois as follows. For fiscal year 2011, it shall be the policy of the city of Waukegan that should be appropriated, position becomes vacant, it shall remain so, except in the following limited circumstances. Would collective bargaining agreement expressly mandates for vacancies to be filled, in which case a vacant, position to be filled, along with the precise provision requiring it to be filled under the collective bargaining agreement, shall be reported to Labor Relations Committee by the department head wishing to fill such a vacancy. B, when a department head decides for the best interest of the city of Waukegan, a vacant position is to be filled, the justification to fill the position must be presented to the Labor Relations Committee for approval, then the matter must be approved by a majority vote of this full City Council, and that it shall be in full force from effect from and after its passage. That's as much as I really will read from that. And then a proclamation, item C, which is to provide travel guidelines for fiscal year 2011. A Resolution Number 10 dash zero blank, a resolution providing guidelines for travel for city of Waukegan employees for fiscal year 2011. Whereas the city of Waukegan recognizes the need to institute certain controls related to travel for the upcoming fiscal year, and whereas a mechanism needs to be enacted in order to ensure both uniformity of application of travel guidelines and City Council approval of expenditures related to such travel. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council, Council of the city of Waukegan, Illinois as follows. Section 1 for fiscal year 2011, it shall be the policy of the city of Waukegan that for out-of-state travel, overnight travel, or in-state travel, requiring an expenditure of $500 or more, such an expenditure and the justification, justification therefore be presented by the department head of the employee requesting such an expenditure to the Finance Committee prior to the expenditure. If the Finance Committee approves of the expenditure, then the request shall go before the City Council for approval. Only such expenditures as authorized under this process will be reimbursed. For the purposes of this resolution, in-state travel shall include travel to the metropolitan Milwaukee area. This resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage.
Do the last one, too.
Okay. And now, the final one is the, bear with me just a second. I got two hiring freezes, I don't have the...
Do the other one?
Okay, thank you. D, proclamation for Arbor Day, Resolution 10 dash R dash 30, and that's the wrong one, that's the Belize.
It's just for Noel.
Thank you.
He needs it.
Okay. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and City Council of the city of Waukegan. They do by hereby proclaim Arbor Day in the city of Waukegan, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Be it further resolved, urge all citizens to plant and care for trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Okay, the resolution for Prime Minister for recognizing Honorable Dean O'Bearrow, a motion to approve by Alderman Conken, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll go down to item D, proclamation for Arbor Day. We'll take a motion by Alderman Moisio, seconded by Alderman Newsom. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Now, under item B, resolution to institute a hiring freeze for fiscal year 2011. Accept the motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Before I vote on this, and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, shouldn't we, before we institute this resolution, shouldn't we adopt the appropriation ordinance before we do this resolution? Now, that's just only a question.
I agree.
I don't necessarily agree with, I think we can go ahead with the resolution. It was gonna, it was, it would happen whether the resolution was in effect or not.
I'm trying to hear Greg's bull.
Well, I mean, I mean, we haven't even voted on the appropriations yet, that's, you know, that's just my question.
Well, I would say in the situation that we're involved in right now, the idea that we're going to be hiring in any numbers is probably not likely, and so that's why we were just, we felt this would be appropriate to go ahead and, but, you know, again, it's up to you, gentlemen and lady, to do what you feel is best regarding this. If you want to hold this over for the next City Council meeting, I certainly cannot stop you, but I don't think that there's any real reason to hold it over. It is, it is upon its face what it is.
Your Honor, Your Honor, I have a question.
Yes.
Why do we need a resolution? You, as the executive of the city of Waukegan, can deem no hiring as the executive.
Certainly.
We don't need a resolution.
Well, actually...
You have the full authority to say...
Alderman Cunningham, we felt this was the best way to get the entire elected body up here involved in it, and that's why we felt that it was good to offer it as a resolution.
Your Honor, I have been with three mayors, with three mayors, have seen numerous others. When the chief executive officer says, "No hiring, no hiring," when the chief executive officer says, "No one travels, no one travels," there is no need for a resolution.
Okay.
This is a legal binding, putting us in a mess for nothing. You have the power as a mayor, the city of Waukegan, the chief executive officer, the se... say, "I don't want any hiring," period, Tina, or Barry. Department heads, no more travel unless it's approved through my office.
Thank you, Alderman. I think that basically you have the option here of tabling this or voting it down.
I move to hold it over.
The vote's underway.
Well, okay. You heard the Corporation Council, the vote is underway.
I didn't hear the Corporation Council.
The vote is underway, it's too late to hold it over.
Well, then if we can't hold it over, then there should have been more discussion. This is the first time I'm hearing about this, Your Honor. And what Corporation Council, can you explain to me, why doesn't the mayor, the chief executive officer of this, of the city, cannot deem a no, a freeze on everything? Mayor Hyde did it when he was here without the council approval. Mayor Hyde said, "I want no more hiring unless it's approved through my office." It didn't go through the finance committee, didn't come up here to the council. Durkin did it when I first got here. Can you explain to me why we need a resolution?
Let me, I have a question for you, Alderman. You know, I understand that you are stating what is possible in my office, and I appreciate that, but I guess my, what I'm wondering about is why the reticence to have the whole city council provide a voice and a vote to this. Notwithstanding my executive powers, I think that this is something that the entire city council should take some ownership and responsibility for.
If I might address the question as well, subject. The power of the purse lies in the city council.
Right.
We're talking about limiting hiring, which means cutting back on monies we pay to compensate employees. We're talking about limiting travel, which is money, again, that the city reimburses folks who go places on city business. Those subjects are extremely appropriate to be brought before this council, and quite frankly, if the mayor would have asked me, "Can I just unilaterally do these things?" My advice to him would be to take it to the council. This is not time for a power play, this is time for everybody to join together and try to restrain spending in our city.
If I may comment on that...
Alderman Rivera.
I respect your comments. I've looked at this appropriation ordinance line by line, and I must admit, the travel expenses, it's ridiculous. So I could see why, you know, the resolution to provide guidelines for the fiscal year of 2011, but I can't see why we can't do the resolutions after we have, you know, talked about the appropriation ordinance and gone line by line. There's so many things in this, in this budget, so much fat that we can still cut. It's unbelievable. I mean, I can, I can talk about postage, the amount of money that we spend on postage. I'm glad I received this, because this is what I want the taxpayers to see, and the reason why we chose the vote, you know, against the appropriation ordinance. But travel was one, so this resolution, that one I agree with, no question about it, but I just want to make sure that we do these things in order. Talk about the appropriation ordinance, then, once we come to a compromise, you know, with the appropriation ordinance, then we can talk about these resolutions. I mean, I could continue with this, the gasoline usage. I mean, we have to have some sort of control here. Yeah, there's a lot of things in this, in this appropriation. Believe me, I think we, if we go look at this very well, I think we can save some more jobs, Your Honor, and that's all I'm trying to do.
Okay, thank you, Alderman.
That's all I'm trying to do.
We appreciate that. I think that you're, we, the vote is underway, and so we will move forward with the roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
I thought it was being held over, aren't we gonna...
No, the vote had already begun. We had a motion and we had a second.
Well, technically, Your Honor, you didn't say, "Are there any discussions?" You just moved forward with the vote.
Well, the question was called, Alderman.
Yeah, but you said, "Motion by one person, second by another, roll call." Typically, you would say, "Are there any questions on the motion?" I'm only going by what I've been used to up here.
Sure.
If something different, let me know.
Sure. Well, I guess what I'm curious about is, and what this matter does bring up, since it has been mentioned, that this process has gone on for over six weeks. Everybody in this, at this dais right now, has had multiple opportunities to sit down with our chief financial officer and her staff, review the budget, and make suggestions. I have to be honest with you, I find it disingenuous that suddenly, at the very last moment in this entire process, that roadblocks are being thrown up to passing something that needs to get done and passed, and the sooner we pass it, the more jobs we will save. The longer you wait, the more people will lose their jobs. But I have to be honest with you, lady and gentleman, you are in charge, so I'm gonna tell you what, I'm gonna do something, I'm gonna do something unusual here. I'm gonna agree that I should have asked for discussion first, and I will withdraw my request for a motion and a second. So now it's up to you to decide what to do. If one of you wants to hold this over, we can hold it over to the next meeting. If you want to vote on it tonight, it can be voted on tonight. It's up to you. It is your choice. Alderman Tempest?
Yes, Your Honor, if I may speak to the point. First, the motion said here, if I read correctly, for the fiscal year 2011, I believe we're talking about the year 2010 dash 11. Secondly, Your Honor, it says a hiring freeze, period. Administratively, this may tie your hands more than they need to be tied, and it's a thought, Your Honor.
Well, and I appreciate that, Alderman, as the language says that it would go to the labor relations if we feel like we need to end a position.
There could be a cause and effect that you need to hire another person for a certain position, and this motion on the floor tonight, I think Sam brought up some good points. You are the chief administrator, you are in the responsibility, those are the big shoulders you got, and the Alderman are advisors and consents and so forth, as you're finding out, but I don't believe, I think what you're trying to say, we're in it together as a team, and we need to stick together, and are we gonna go forward or not? But also it ties your, and somewhat as a chief administrator, if you say it's a hiring freeze, I think that's what Sam's saying. We all agree, and I agree, but I can see the other side, too, I really can, and I don't think it hurts you one bit. In fact, it probably strengthens your hand a little more by not having it, but, you know, that's my point.
And I understand your point, and as I said, the nine here, I'm one. Nine to one doesn't work. So, if you have decided that you want to hold this over, do not want to see this enacted, that is a call you make right now, and then it comes up again for a vote at the next city council meeting, at which time you can vote it down.
Your Honor, I...
Now, I have, during the time that I have been mayor, I have done my best to not act in a fashion that could be considered dictatorial or overreaching. That is one of the reasons why we felt it was important to get buy-in by all the members of the city council on what we're doing right now. Otherwise, it becomes very easy down the line to point the fingers at the mayor and say, "The mayor did this, the mayor did that, the mayor wouldn't hire anybody, the mayor put a freeze on, the mayor, the mayor, the mayor." This is a shared responsibility. We are in a time in this city's history that has not been seen, and if we don't act together, then the finger pointing is unfair down the line. So, again, as I said, I believe we have a request by Alderman Rivera to hold it over, and I'm willing, absolutely willing, or Alderman Cunningham, to hold this over. So I'm absolutely willing. I have no argument with whatever you would like to do. So if it's a request to hold it over, it will be held over to the next meeting then. I believe, Alderman Rivera?
Let me, before you say anything, Alderman Cunningham, when you're saying, "Mayor, that we don't want this enacted," it's the time, the timing, it's, it's, I'm not against this. I just wanted to make sure that we, let's take a look at our appropriation ordinance first, take a look at our budget, and then we make those decisions.
I'm not arguing with you, Alderman.
That's all, that's all I'm asking.
I acquiesce to your request, and I have said that very clearly. So it appears we do have a request to hold it over, so resolution on the hiring freeze...
By Rivera?
By Alderman Rivera will be held over to the next city council meeting. So, thank you, Alderman. Now, if we could move on to item C, which is the resolution to provide travel guidelines for fiscal year 2011. Do we have any questions or comments on item C? I hear no questions or comments.
That's another resolution, excuse me.
I'm sorry, Alderman.
That's another resolution, I'm...
Absolutely, it is.
I agree with it, but again, you know, I, I just feel like we're putting the, you know, the cart before the horses here. You know, that's why, again, I don't want to keep on repeating myself, but I just feel that we should take care of the appropriation ordinance before we even discuss.
Are you requesting to hold it over, Alderman?
Yes.
You are, okay. Then, item C, resolution to provide travel guidelines for fiscal year 2010 and 2011, as it should be stated, is now held over to the next committee meeting. At this point, ladies and gentlemen, we will be going into executive session. This executive session will be resettling a claim against the city, real estate transaction, and fire union negotiating report. We have a request, a motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
I'm gonna vote no, and that's because I think, I don't know honestly why we can't wait till the end of the meeting.
There is actually a good reason, Alderman, and that will become evident once we, once we go into the meeting then, to the executive session. So ladies and gentlemen...
Alderman Newsom?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. The eyes have it?
Yep.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, it'll take approximately 30 minutes for this executive session. I'll take a motion to come back into regular, oh, I'm sorry. All right. Give me a thumbs up, Wayne. Okay, I'll take a motion to come back into regular session by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Rivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. We're back in regular session, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your patience. Now, we will move on to committee reports and motions. Judiciary Committee, Alderman Figueroa, please.
Your Honor?
No.
It's quick, isn't it?
Your Honor?
Yes, Alderman Moiseo.
Motion to take this by omnibus up until the committee reports.
Up through now?
Just a motion. If you guys don't want to, that's fine, I'm just making a motion.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
There isn't that much, we can do it.
Let's just go ahead and do it.
Then somebody's gotta say...
That's okay with you, Alderman? We don't have that many items, so we should be able to move through fairly quickly.
Your Honor, under Judiciary Committee, item number, or item A, it was the, had to do with the SAC wireless, clear, clear wire zoning calendar 2286, and there was a motion at Judiciary Committee to rescind the request. That is because our staff had been working with SAC to put this particular antenna on the water tower structure at the Genesee Theater. There'd be some income coming to the city as that, and as a result, so there's a motion to, an ISO move, that the request for zoning calendar 2286 at 33 North County Street be rescinded.
Thank you, Alderman. We have a motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
I think that can be a...
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you.
Yeah, second item, Your Honor, has to do with item number B. At the request of the Alderman of the Ward and staff, we are holding that over. We got it out of committee, just get it on the floor. We're holding that over, there's... Reviewing, so...
Few questions.
There are some questions on that, okay. Thank you, Alderman, and that will be brought up at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. Now we move on to the Public Safety Committee. Alderman Larson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We can get through this without omnibus, please. The committee met at 6:00 PM on April 26th, there was a quorum presence. The new business included a traffic survey, handicap parking. The Waukegan Police Department received a request to install a handicap parking space in front of 1108 Berwick. The homeowner has several ailments that limit her mobility, and she would benefit from the installation of this parking stall. The police department researched the request and found the placement of the handicap parking spot would not hinder any other parking in this area. The police department recommends that parking be limited in front of 1108 Berwick Boulevard to handicap parking only. The police department also recommends the city yards erect a sign and paint a parking stall in front of this residence. These changes will be covered under section 21-122, limited parking, handicap parking only in front of the residence commonly known as 1108 Berwick Boulevard. The Public Safety Committee recommends an ISO move that the proper city officials be authorized to draft an ordinance to reflect the handicap parking only in front of the residence commonly known as 1108 Berwick Boulevard.
Thank you. A motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
The eyes have it, thank you.
Item B was in accordance with our new agreements on purchasing or seeking agreements on certain amounts to be funded for services. Request to accept a low bid for the quarterly maintenance agreement for the city emergency notification sirens. The Waukegan Police Department respectfully requests permission to accept a low bid for the quarterly maintenance of the citywide emergency warning sirens from Huckar Electric Company, 1620 York House Road, Waukegan, Illinois 60087, at an annual cost not to exceed $4,402. The Public Safety Committee recommends, an ISO move, that the proper city officials be authorized to accept that low bid for the quarterly maintenance of the citywide emergency warning sirens from Huckar Electric Company, 1620 York House Road, Waukegan, Illinois 60087, at an annual cost not to exceed $4,402.
We have a motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figaroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
The ayes have it, thank you.
Item C was request to accept the low bid from Black &amp; Black Architects to conduct an architectural engineering study, easy for me to say. The Waukegan Police Department respectfully requests permission to accept the low bid from Black &amp; Black Architects to conduct an architectural engineering study at 1721 North Macquarie at a cost of $19,400. This is the Reserve Center, in case some of you may not know that. The study will be paid for by a grant that the Police Department received from the Department of Defense. The Public Safety recommends, an ISO move, that the proper city officials be authorized to low, to accept the low bid from Black &amp; Black Architects, 200 East Church Street, Libertyville, Illinois 60048, to conduct an architectural engineering study at 1721 North Macquarie for a cost of $19,400. The study will be paid for by a grant that the Police Department received from the Department of Defense.
We have a motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figaroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
The ayes have it, thank you.
Item D, under the Police Department, is for the payment of annual membership assessment fee to the Northeastern Illinois Regional Crime Lab. This is the crime lab we've used for years to process evidence. The Waukegan Police Department requests permission to pay the 2010, 2011 annual membership assessment fee and maintenance agreement fee to the Northeastern Illinois Regional Crime Lab. This agency is currently responsible for processing physical evidence removed from the various crime scenes throughout the city. The Public Safety Committee recommends, an ISO move, that the proper city officials be authorized to pay the 2010, 2011, there's a typo there, annual membership assessment fee and maintenance agreement fee of $114,634.27 to the Northeastern Illinois Regional Crime Lab, 1,000 Butterfield Road, Suite 1009, Vernon Hills, Illinois 600, 60061.
We have a motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figaroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
The ayes have it, thank you, Alderman Larson. The next item would be old business, and I want you to note that, under old business, item A, that most, that business item is the same as item E under new business. Now, I, I might, what I would like to do, since I think that that probably will engender some discussion, that what we do is we go through the other items first and hold that for the very last agenda item. Do you have any, any disagreement with that? No? None seen, thank you. So what we would do under new business, recommended actions by Corporation Council, we will approve the payroll, and unfortunately, I don't have the amount on, on here in front of me. Okay, thank you. We approve the payroll dated April 21st, 2010, in the amount of $1,408,888.1. We have a motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figaroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
The ayes have it, thank you. Item B, approved bills dated April 30th, 2010, in the amount of $1,414,728.4. We have a motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figaroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
The ayes have it, thank you. Item C is a nominee for the Waukegan Port Authority Board. I have brought to you two nominees, Mr. Joseph Leggett and through Alderman Tony Figaroa, Mr. Homer Benavides. Is that correct? Is that close?
Homer Benavides.
Benavides, I'm sorry. We will take a motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman Needham.
Your Honor, in, in all fairness to Mr. Benavides, I nominated him, I asked you to nominate him. He sent me back an email with some questions, and until those questions that he has are answered, I'd like to hold his nomination over, in fairness to him. He wanted to, he's a local boy, local young man, graduate of University of Illinois, he Environmental Engineering, he's worked for, for the-
Wait a minute, Alderman, did you say he's a graduate of University of Illinois?
Yes.
Is there some sort of U of I plot? Because Joe Leggett is a graduate of U of I, well-
So is Alderman Tempest, so is Alderman Moiseo, and so is Alderman Figaroa.
I sense something underhanded going on here, ladies and gentlemen, but we'll go ahead anyway. Please proceed.
I just, I just wanted to make, make the point that he's working for the Navy now, another, but he did work with the air, what's the, the federal agency that handles airplanes?
FAA.
FAA, Aeronautica Administration, but he's got great qualifications for this, but he had some questions, I want to make sure that he has an opportunity to get all those questions answered.
Certainly, uh, well-
All right, so we'll go ahead with Joe Leggett. Yes.
Yes, absolutely. Well, then we will proceed with Mr. Leggett's nomination for the Waukegan Port Authority Board.
Do we need to amend the motion at all, or can we just strike it?
I'll just bring it up the next time. Withdraw the other motion.
Yeah, we'll just bring it up the next time on the agenda. I think we can probably split this out without any real issue on that, so, again, we had a motion and a second. Does that still hold for Mr. Leggett, given that Mr. Benavides has been removed? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye for the Illini.
Alderman Needham. Alderman Larson. You started.
Wait, did you, did you call me?
I'm sorry. Alderman Needham.
Aye for the Seventh Ward resident.
Alderman Larson.
Uh, he's an ex-marine, Alderman.
Alderman Rivera.
I, I-
Alderman Cunningham.
Lee, Lee.
Sorry. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye for the Illini.
Alderman Figaroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
The ayes have it, congratulations, Joe. Look forward to having you serve on the board. Next up would, I'm gonna, again, well, here, I'm sorry, we're in item D, I apologize. We have a nominee for the Waukegan Development Commission, Ms. Sarah Griffin. We have a motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Sarah's a busy lady, and I will approve her being busier, thank you. Yeah, aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figaroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
The ayes have it, congratulations, Sarah. Look forward to working with you as well. Let's move down to item F, and, and then go back to item, we'll go back to either ordinance A or item E, depending, they're both the same thing. We wish to grant permission to Waukegan Post 281 to hold their annual poppy drive May 21st through the 23rd, 2010, and May 28th through the 31st of 2010. We'll take a motion by Alderman Conkin, oh, I'm sorry, by Alderman Figaroa, seconded by Alderman Conkin. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. Now we will move to, well, since we're under new business or recommended actions, why don't we just stay in that subheading, and we'll go to item E. Basically what this is, is that we are seeking a motion to reconsider an ordinance to adopt the appropriation ordinance for the City of Waukegan, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2010, and ending April 30th, 2011, as originally presented on April 26th, 2010. I will now entertain a motion to reconsider. May I speak to it? Corporation Council would like to address the council for a moment.
This motion, of course, must be made by somebody who voted to reject the appropriation ordinance at last. That doesn't mean because you make a motion that you're gonna change your vote, but that's necessary to get then a second, and majority vote to put the matter back on the table. Why should it be put back on the table this evening? Because if we don't, we are in a crisis situation in the city. Under state statute, municipality like we are cannot spend one nickel on anything, police, fire, water, not a nickel, unless there's an appropriation ordinance in place, with one exception. The exception is that the corporate authorities may, discretionary, may authorize the heads of departments, away from the statute now, or other separate agencies of municipality, to make necessary expenditures for the support thereof upon the basis of the appropriations of preceding fiscal year. If we do not resurrect, whether you like it or not, if we don't resurrect this appropriation ordinance and at least put it on the table, we will then not have an opportunity to authorize emergency or necessary expenditures until a new appropriation is passed, which means that basically the council would leave the city shut down when we adjourn this evening.
Okay, thank you, Corporation Council. Once again, I, I will ask for a motion to reconsider from an individual who voted with the prevailing side, which was no, towards the last budget at our meeting a week ago. Do we have such a motion? I will ask one more time.
Your Honor, I-
Alderman Cunningham, please. Do we have such a motion? We have a motion by Alderman Newsom to reconsider the appropriation ordinance. We need a second.
May I second?
Seconded by Alderman Tempest.
Your Honor, a port of order.
One moment, please.
Port of order, Your Honor.
Alderman, I was about to get to you while we were just finishing up this bit of necessary business to put this agenda item on the floor. Now, Alderman Cunningham, please.
Your Honor, Corporation Council, if I'm not mistaken, the second must come from the prevailing side.
Incorrect.
That is not correct.
No, the motion must, there's nothing about the second.
Corporation Council, I'm asking you, the second must come from the prevailing side. Corporation Council, can I get your opinion on this, please?
The motion must come from the prevailing side. There is nothing, and that's under our ordinances, there is nothing that says the second must come from the prevailing side.
Okay.
So my opinion is that anyone can second it, once the motion is made by someone on the prevailing side.
Okay. Well, the reason I ask that, Corporation Council, it has been in the past, when the prevailing side has won.
No, no, no.
I have ten years of experience on the council floor, and I know I don't have as many as the senior does, but I can remember during the Hyde administration and the Durkin administration, when I personally voted against some things, and I tried to come back in second, I was then told that the second must come, now, if I, that was wrong, then it was wrong. I'm only stating what was, what I was led to believe and what I've been used to. So it must go to your point, Your Honor, those are another things that was inaccurate over the last ten or fifteen years.
It happens, Alderman.
It, it does happen.
Yeah.
So, so now that it's on the floor, Your Honor, or Corporation Council, what actions do we take from this point?
Well, at this point, given our discussion regarding the fireman's agreement, if we are to, as best that I understand-
Point of order.
Yes, or Alderman?
We have a motion by the, by the prevailing side, a second, to reconsider-
Reconsider.
We haven't taken a vote on yet.
Not yet.
We're discussing for-
Just to reconsider.
Okay.
That's correct.
Don't we vote to reconsider?
We have to vote to reconsider.
We just have the motion right now.
And then you vote again.
Yes. A majority vote can reconsider.
That's what I'm, well, we haven't done that.
No, I was waiting for discussion to-
Oh, I'm sorry.
For everybody to have a chance to speak.
Okay.
Did we have any further comments before we do a roll call on that motion to reconsider? Seeing no hands, then I will call for a roll call vote on the motion to reconsider.
An aye is to reconsider.
That's, that is correct, Alderman.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
No.
Alderman Cunningham.
No.
Alderman Conkin.
No.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figaroa.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
The motion to reconsider has passed. Now, we will move forward with a, basically a vote to approve.
We can discuss, let's have discussion?
Right, okay, yeah.
Discussion.
Right, it's discussion at this moment, but, I mean, what we, we have some options before us. One of them can be to hold it over.
No.
No.
No? You can't do that?
Let me, let me, uh, explain-
Alderman Cunningham, let the-
I, I know, but I, I have a question. I want to make sure we're clear. We're not talking about appropriations, we're talking about the item of the particular union, correct?
Not right now, we're talking about the appropriation ordinance. That other item has not been put forward. Yes, please.
Let me try to walk the council through what is necessary this evening, if we're going to be able to spend money after adjournment. We have now had a motion to reconsider made by one on the prevailing side, second, and a majority of vote has been given to reconsider. So the appropriation ordinance that was voted down at the last council meeting is now back on the table. We now have a couple of options. One, if there is a sense of the council that we have five votes in favor, there could simply be a motion that the appropriation ordinance be passed or adopted, and that vote could occur. If the sense of the council is that we do not at this point have five votes in favor of that ordinance, then the following needs to be done. We have to have a motion then to consider the appro, to continue, excuse me, the appropriation ordinance for further consideration at the next city council meeting, so that puts off any vote tonight, and to authorize the city in the interim to spend money for necessary services under the power of the prior appropriation ordinance, and to ratify on the same basis all city expenditures made to date in this new fiscal year. That will make us legal, and that will allow us to go on without having to call for an actual vote on the appropriation ordinance this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, Alderman Larson.
I'd like to make it a record, a part of the record, what the amendments that we have been discussing with the firefighters include. Many of you are aware that under the original appropriations ordinance, the potential for five firefighters being laid off existed. Due to negotiations, accommodation has been reached, so those five firefighters will be fully funded under the coming fiscal year appropriations ordinance. Essentially, the chief and the city have created about a $450,000 finding to fund those five firefighters. There's basically five things, including minimizing some capital outlays, commodities, contractual services, and the firefighters have agreed to certain things in their agreement to, we call them give backs, for want of a better word, to make this all happen. And I just want to make that amendment as part of the record, and I appreciate their working with the city.
Thank you. Alderman Larson. Appreciate it. Alderman Rivera, you look like you're.
Yes.
Okay.
With that said, I would like to see if we can vote on that separately, only because I support that, and I'm glad that we're, we're not losing five firefighters. But then, again, when we go back to voting for the entire appropriation ordinance, you know, I still have some problems with that issue. You know, and it's not, it's, it's, it's not fair, and that's why I've been asking, you know, for this line by line, and I know the fire department took some of the line items off their, off their budget, and I can, I can't see why we can't do that with some of the other departments. Because I've been wanting to save some of these jobs as best as we can, and please, don't take this personal, you know, especially the finance department. Please, don't take it personal. You know, this is what I'm up here for. But again, I sure would like to see that voted separately, because I, you know, I'm glad that we're not losing the firefighters. Thank you.
Ray, would you like to speak to that issue?
I really think what's happened here tonight, what Alderman Larson has brought up, should be in the form of an amendment to the original appropriation ordinance, a second. You vote on that tonight, and then if you wish to hold that document over for two weeks, I think what Mr. Finn had said about continuing resolution for the next two weeks would be in order.
Right. You can't take it out, though, and separate it from.
But it would give the Alderman the opportunity to vote on that amendment tonight, to put that in as part of the, the budget.
All right. Thank you, Ray. We have a motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moiseo, to amend the appropriation ordinance with the information from the, that have resulted from the negotiations with the firefighters. Roll call, please, on the amended motion.
Your Honor, Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman Cunningham.
I think this is, since it's been brought, and I, I had asked you earlier about this, and you told me it wasn't on the agenda. That's what you told me. I had, I simply said, "Your Honor, is, are we going to be talking about the firefighters' proposal?" You said that was not on the table. That's what you said. Now we're in a whole new voting. So now that this has gone on, this discussion has gone on, I mean, maybe we need to bring some more things that were out there. I agree with Alderman Rivera, and I think it was because of the urgency that firefighters were going to be fired that brought them back to the table. So now, if it brought one union back to the table, it should bring another union back to the table. And I don't think we need to pass the appropriations to get them back to the table. There was a, I think it was very clear, it was very direct, that we are looking for concessions from unions who have not done so, as the firefighters have done and other unions have done, and if you can't do that for us, then we can move on. But what brought the firefighters back, because they, from my understanding now, from my understanding, they were just as stern and maybe non-negotiable until that vote came up. And if they were willing to come back, why can't the others come? That's all I'm asking. So my thing is here is, if one group did it, then the other one is probably going to do it. But if we close our eyes, and, and you know, I, I do want to say this to the finance department, over the last 10 years of I've been here, I've seen more commitment, more dedication, more professionalism from that finance department as giving, giving the Alderman all the facts that they need to make the necessary decision, not giving part of it, not giving a portion of it, not letting one Alderman know versus another Alderman, not doing things outside the scope of being fair and impartial. That finance department is a different finance department today than it was a year ago in the last three years. So you have to be commended for that, young lady, and you and your staff. But on this issue right here, I am, I believe in negotiation, and negotiations are tough. I can remember when the senior Alderman used to say, "I love to negotiate." You put your best on that side, we put our best on that side, and we meet at a happy median. But that happy median must come in, and it doesn't stop because one party doesn't want to, don't want to be at the table. And I'm sorry if it offended them or offended, that's part of negotiations. Let's get down to the down and dirty and say, "I want this." And if they can't give it to this city, then we move on. But we're moving on without even giving them an opportunity, because they might have hurt our feelings, they might have said something they didn't want to say. That's part of negotiations. And I'm glad the fire department did that, it saved their jobs, and as Alderman Rivera said earlier, I'm about saving jobs, period. I don't have allegiance to either side. I am the judge up here, and when you give me the facts, and all the facts, thank you, Tina and your department, then I can make a conscious decision.
So where do you, where, if I could ask Alderman, what is your desire?
I think, I think someone said it earlier, that let's give them another month, so you guys can spend money, and then move on. Because I remember, we never, we didn't pass budgets on this council floor till late July. I remember twice, as an Alderman, because we were heckling over, over contracts. So what is the sense of urgency of saying, "We got to do it now, or we're going to fire this, we're going to fire that"? Give them the money that's necessary to go on month to month until we get the things that's necessary to move forward. And maybe, Mayor, you could put a timeline on it. Put a timeline on it. I don't have no problems with that.
Tomorrow?
Not that type of timeline.
Well, but wait a minute now. Don't offer me something.
I hear you, Mayor. At least, at least we have a joking spirit. Thank you.
Well, I would say that, first of all, it would probably be inappropriate for me to lay a timeframe right here, right now. I don't think that would work. But Alderman, I think what we need to do is, we need to cut to the heart of what you're, what you're saying, and that basically, it sounds like you would like to hold over the amendment, correct?
No.
The, the, as amended? You don't? Okay.
Let's vote on that. That's on the floor right now, correct? Let's vote on the amendment, and then we'll move on to the next issue.
Okay.
So we're clear. The amendment is what the firefighter has presented to us. We're admitting that to the budget.
That's correct. The appropriations ordinance.
Budget appropriations.
Well, they're two different things, but.
Whatever you want to call it.
Okay, we'll have a motion to amend, including the, the five firefighters that are being retained, and we have a motion by Alderman Moiseo. Do we have a second?
Larson and Moiseo made the motion already.
Larson and Moiseo.
Alderman Larson, Alderman Moiseo. So a roll call, please, on the.
Why don't you make, why don't you make one of the Alders on the opposing side? Just joking, y'all. Just joking.
Ready.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
I vote aye, but that's also, so the people know that it's subject to, you know, union ratification too as well.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
I would vote aye, but I'd like to also commend the fire union for coming to the table and working very diligently with Tina, and coming to what we hope will be an acceptable arrangement for both sides. I vote aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye, and thanks for coming to the table.
Alderman Figaroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. The appropriation ordinance is officially amended. Now, the question is, where do we go from here? I think Corporation Council probably would like to provide us with a little guidance.
Well, as I said before, if the sense of the council is that they're not ready tonight to vote on the appropriation ordinance, up or down, what we then would need would be a motion from an Alderman to continue consideration of the appropriation ordinance to the next council meeting, and to authorize the city, in the meantime, to spend money for necessary services under the power of the prior appropriation ordinance, and to ratify on the same basis all city expenditures made to date in this new fiscal year. Now, let me just clarify something. I don't know what was done in the past. I know a lot was done in the past, quite frankly, that shouldn't have been done in the past from a legal standpoint. And we're trying to undo some of those things that were done in the past. The statute says that you can extend, you can, you can continue expenditures before you pass a new appropriation ordinance, but those expenditures must be for necessary services. So we're in the position that even tonight, if this city council does authorize that necessary services be funded, till the next council meeting at least, when we can look again at the, at the appropriation ordinance, that doesn't mean that everything just goes on the way it is now. What that means is that the department heads and the mayor will probably have to determine tomorrow what necessary services there are that must be funded on an interim basis. And then, because the council would have voted to authorize those expenditures, they can be made. And once again, I'm just going to say it for the last time, absent this procedure going through tonight, the city of Waukegan shuts down when this meeting adjourns.
Thank you. And I would ask that we choose what we do very carefully at this point, because going wrong is going off the cliff. Even this extension of the existing appropriation ordinance is going to force me to make decisions as to whether everybody's working or not, whether the expenditures that are discretionary get covered. There are things that are going to happen that I don't think any of us can really, really figure right at this very moment, because this is uncharted territory for all of us. As mayor, I would rather see an appropriation ordinance passed tonight that will allow us to move forward with funding and keeping as many people on the job as we possibly can. Failure to do so tonight and to extend it, as Newt described, could lead to a larger number of people losing their jobs, and sooner. There's, obviously, nothing is in stone. We can vote, vote for this appropriation ordinance. It's based on what we think is going to happen as far as revenue, but no one can predict with any absolute certainty where we're going to be even in 90 days. So I'm asking you to consider this right now, that the appropriation ordinance can be approved, contract negotiations still go on, and once they're finalized, we can bring those back and amend. But we have to appropriate it first. Let's not play chicken with the livelihood and the wherewithal of the people that work for the city of Waukegan. Let's do business now, and let's go back to the negotiating table when the remaining parties decide to come and sit down with us. We are prepared to do that. Corporation Council.
One more point of clarification. The appropriation ordinance itself makes no expenditure, none. What it does is set the limit to what expenditures can be in that particular area for the fiscal year. It gives the power to spend money, but it does not spend the money. That power remains in this council, which has, again, the power of the purse. So all an appropriation ordinance does is say that for this fiscal year, we're not going to go beyond this for these expenses. Not saying we can go up to it, but we won't go beyond it. That's all we're saying, but without, but without that, again, we have no power to spend money.
So, we've amended the appropriation ordinance to reflect the efforts of the firefighters. We have one union left that's outstanding at the moment, other discussions underway, all of which can take place even if we approve this appropriation ordinance before us today. It does not limit our ability to continue that.
Your Honor.
Alderman Cunningham.
Your Honor, it sounds like you are, you and your staff really needs the appropriation ordinance passed. It also sounds like there are some Aldermen who are not looking, I shouldn't say we're not looking to terminate a fire, but I think we're looking to make sure those unions get back. I have, and this is right off the cuff, maybe a, a solution. I wouldn't mind passing appropriation ordinance, or voting for an appropriation ordinance, if we appropriate those bodies not to be fired, and if, through negotiations, we don't come with what we want to, then you can move forward what you think is necessary to run this city. I have no problems with that, leaving those bodies in the budget, and as you and your team go back and negotiate, and if they don't come through like the fire department, like the police department, like I asked me to, then we move on with what we think is in the best interest of the city of Waukegan, so we don't close the doors, so we don't declare a state of emergency, so we don't do things that is unprecedented to Waukegan's history. That, to me, is something I, I can live with. Then, the power then becomes in the chief executive officer's hand, the hand of his team, then he presents what we think is necessary to move the city forward, and if they don't, then they don't. But that's a compromise in my eyes. It's enough to say, "I've done my job." To make sure, I've done everything that I can to make sure that Waukegan people, and those who are losing their, potentially be losing their job, in fact, without a doubt, are Waukegan residents. Are we willing to do that?
Alderman, I would like to ask our CFO, what would be the ramifications of going back, because do we have those numbers? I mean, that would, that would require new math, right?
The appropriation ordinance was prepared to be balanced, so if we fund positions that were assumed to be laid off, then we won't have a balanced appropriation. We won't have resources that are matched to the uses.
And the question, I guess, is begged, what if they don't come back? What if they don't enter back into negotiations? Then what do we do?
Your Honor, I think from a legislative standpoint, I have done my job. If a person don't come back and willing to talk and negotiate, then shame on them, not me. If, and I, Tina is the expert here, but if you're not paying the position, if no money's being outlaid as an expense, our goal is to pass an appropriation. That is the goal, to pass an appropriation. And as the Corporation Council said earlier, it is a, basically a blank check that will be managed by the department heads within the budget that we have outlaid. So all I'm saying is, let's pass the appropriation. Well, let's make sure those bodies, because if we pass appropriation, maybe I'm wrong. Newt, we have done a lot of things in the past wrong, and I, and I thank you for bringing that to my attention, but maybe I'm wrong, but if it's not appropriated, you can't do it. Now, I know the senior Alderman knows that one, and he's taught us well. If it's not in the appropriations, you don't have any money to spend it. So if we say yes to appropriation without those bodies being in there, then you can't add it unless it comes back in his amendment, right, Tina?
Under state statute, you can appropriate by object of expenditure, which is the way the appropriation ordinance is currently prepared, unlike the line item version that's been prepared in the past. So within that, you have the flexibility in the personnel or benefits line item to affect those savings. So if there's concessions that are awash to the city, so employees can be brought back in, the actual number of positions aren't actually being. the actual number of positions aren't actually being proposed to be appropriated. What's being appropriated is dollar amounts within the object category of the department. So there would be that flexibility. If there's a substantial change to the appropriation, either up or down, that would require a supplemental appropriation ordinance, which would have to go through a publication process.
Okay.
But the way the appropriation ordinance has been prepared is that there would be flexibility to add positions in if there were concessions that were reached.
Well, I, as this alderman, I'm prepared to move forward with appropriations if we're willing to. I'd rather take something out than have to put it in. Because once it's out, under governments that I've been a part of, they don't go back in. So I'm willing to pass, I'm willing to vote, I can't say pass, I'm willing to vote in favor of appropriations. If we're willing to make an amendment to the appropriations to make sure those bodies are there, and then, mayor, I think we can put some timelines on anyone and say, "Come back to the table and negotiate with us." That's what me as an alderman, as a legislator, is willing to do tonight.
Thank you, Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Needham.
Yeah, I understand what Alderman Cunningham is trying to get at. It's kind of backwards methodology, but once you do it, it's kind of wishing that this group would do the same thing as a fireman would do and approve everything and then negotiate. Unfortunately, I don't think we can do it that way. It doesn't work like that. Secondly, there's not one of us up here that wants anybody laid off. Not one of us. I know that. I've spoken to every one of you. But the issue is, like Alderman Cunningham said, you know, we used to take and extend our appropriation out to June, maybe July. We had the luxury to do that. Those were good times. We're facing times Waukegan and every other city has not ever seen before. We're at a crisis. For every pay period that we don't act and do anything, there's going to be more bodies cut, I guarantee you. I guarantee you that we're going to have to make tougher decisions down the road. Don't forget, we're still waiting on the state. The state's going to decide to cut two or three percent from all the municipalities. That's still out there. We still have to look at that. There's still things we haven't seen before coming at us. This is serious business. If you looked in your packets, you'll see a memo from Tina in her office about the other union's negotiation. And it's all highlighted and laid out. Everybody had the opportunity to come back to the table. Firemen stepped up. The other union, unfortunately, is dragging their feet. Do we want to lay anybody off? Absolutely not. But we need to move forward with this for the betterment of the whole, the totality of the group. And unfortunately, decisions made, things are going to happen. But don't forget some other things. The COBRA benefit that's in place, I believe with the stimulus money, is up at the end of May. So anybody being laid off before the end of May pays 35% towards their COBRA payment. After May, after June 1st.
They pay 100%.
Then they pay 100%, but they have 15 months of coverage at 35%. That's a benefit out there. So longer we drag our feet, the longer we're leaving people in limbo also.
Thank you. Alderman Moisio.
Just to piggyback on that, I look at it as being on life support. And we got to do something now. We may be able to fix some things later, but we got to do it now, or we'll bleed out. As Alderman Needham said, no one that I've talked to up here likes this appropriation ordinance, including the mayor. We have cut things out of his staff, that's unbelievable. Left him almost powerless in some areas.
And left the city without an economic development.
He's not happy with it. I don't, there's many other things that each one of us up here aren't happy with it. But we're on life support. And we got to do something now. We can't wait. Because if we don't, we'll bleed out. We will bleed out. As Alderman Needham said, the state goes through that, with that income tax thing, we're going to lose another $2 million. Then what? We lose another $2 million out of this city, we're in real trouble. We will be shutting the doors. We have got to do something now. It's not easy, it's painful, it's people's lives, it's their livelihood. But nothing is written in stone, and there's never just, we can come, all the other unions have come forward and stepped up.
Your honor.
We have to.
Yes. Alderman Needham.
If, say we do approve the appropriation ordinance as amended, that doesn't stop negotiating with the other union and trying to keep people on board and working and go through the same process that the other ones did, right?
That's correct.
So we, okay.
Alderman Larson.
Thank you, mayor. Tina, it's been very enlightening. I just wanted to address the issue of fairness and the fact that the negotiations that have been going on, and I'll use the firefighters, because we amended our appropriations. It's a matter of fairness. When someone, when some union group, negotiating group, steps up and says, "I want to do right by the city," and other negotiating groups do not take that opportunity that they have been giving, it's unfair to punish and say, "Okay, we're enforcing your negotiated agreement, but the other one, they can go along for a period of time too." That's fundamentally unethical for us to want to do that and unfair to those who have negotiated. So I take exception to Alderman Cunningham's suggestion that we continue on with the existing agreement with our other union that we are still negotiating with because of that. And I just wanted to let everybody out there know my perspective on that. I also want to say that, you know, darn it, this has been very troubling. I myself, way back many years ago when I was starting my career, I had to accept givebacks by the company that I worked for to keep my job. It was a lot of money back then. I ended up with three jobs, not just two, because I had my job, our eight-to-five job, I had my Marine Reserve job. Then I went, got a job at Polk Brothers over on the Waukegan Plaza, selling appliances two nights a week and every other Sunday, because my wife and my first son was right there, and we needed to do whatever we needed to do. From personal experience, I've gone through this. With my situation, the company I worked for recovered. This was during the oil embargo years, when the cost of oil drove the cost of plastics, I worked for a plastic molding company, and basically doubled the cost of feedstock. We had existing agreements with a lot of big companies, automotive end-users, et cetera. Keep your job or face the reality that you wouldn't have one if you couldn't accept the givebacks. I liked my job. That lasted about 27 months before I got back to even again. I did a good job for Polk Brothers, and I made it through my Marine Reserve six years. So anyhow, that's my perspective on all this. It's not pleasant. It won't be pleasant in the coming year, what we're facing economically. But we have to be optimistic that this will be a temporary situation and that our economy will recover, and I'm prayerful for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Larson. Alderman Cunningham, I'm going to ask a favor of you. Trust in us. Give us a chance to show you that we're doing the right thing, that we're heading in the right direction, and we will treat everybody as fairly as we are treated. And allow this appropriation ordinance to go through tonight to take a lot of the question out of what is waiting for people. Give us the ability to move forward with the financing of the city's operations as they should fully be financed, not on an ad hoc, issue-by-issue basis and forcing myself and department heads to choose between things that are probably both necessary. So I will ask you to please allow this vote to move forward this evening as it stands at this moment. And give us the opportunity, when the time comes, to sit back down with the remaining union and hopefully bargain in good faith between the two parties and find some solution. But we just cannot put the city's operations in jeopardy. I'm asking for your belief in what I'm doing, what the people that we've brought in to work for the city of Waukegan are doing, and with your fellow aldermen's intent behind getting this passed. Will you allow me to do that?
Your honor, in all fairness to the aldermen that voted against this because they were looking for other, for all the unions to come back in good faith, I'm assuming that we're going to hold this matter over.
You cannot do that.
Well, then, we vote our conscience and move on.
Okay. Well, I think we are.
I do appreciate you asking, though. I do appreciate you, and this is no slight to you. By no means, I am, as Alderman Larson has said, I hope he doesn't, I don't hope, I don't wish for you to take, you know, question with anything I say. I say it with the intent of the best interest of this city, and I say it without passion or prejudice. I say it because I think it's in my heart and my soul, this is the right thing to do. So you don't have to take issue with me. At the end of the day, when we leave here, you and I are going to be friends. That I do know.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Figueroa.
Your honor, we can, in fact, hold this appropriations matter over two weeks. And the way we can do that is, as the corporation counsel said, by extending last year's appropriation for the two weeks. And I understand that what Alderman Needham said, that we have to make a decision before the end of the month because of the COBRA thing. And that gives those employees that are, that will be unemployed an opportunity to take advantage of that COBRA. That is, in fact, an issue at the end of the month. We've had one union come forward. And I tell you, as an alderman, I really appreciate, as a citizen of Waukegan, I really appreciate them coming forward. So the only way that we can do this is by extending last year's appropriation for the month of May. And I guarantee you that by, well, at least my vote, what I can guarantee you with my vote would be in two weeks, but tonight it would be against this appropriation. So if I could, is hold this matter over with the contingency that we extend last year's appropriation through the month of May.
It cannot come in the request of hold over. It has to be a motion. Could I beg, again, and I'm sorry Tina, to make you go back and forth again, could you please describe to the council and to the audience here what the ramifications of that action will be? If they want to hold it over and continue the current appropriation ordinance for a period of two weeks?
Well legislatively, they can do that. The appropriation ordinance that was prepared, that's been amended tonight, assumed a May 1st effective date of the cuts. The appropriation ordinance that would be extended from the prior year did have a $6.5 million operating deficit in it. So you would be extending an appropriation that has an operating deficit. And the appropriation ordinance as currently prepared would be understating the expenditures because of the extra month of payroll expense.
Okay, thank you. And I have to say that I feel that such an action would be detrimental to the health of the city, the health of government, to ability to continue on its day-to-day operations. And if it were to move forward, as mayor, I would have to say that I would have to veto it and force a two-thirds on that particular amended issue. I'm not comfortable with it. I think it just puts off for two more weeks what we know we need to do right now. I honestly do believe this needs to be settled quickly. Alderman Tempest.
May I speak? Thank you, mayor. Our appropriation was done a little bit differently than what I've been used to in the past. Tina did it by appropriation by object, which is a little different format than we've had before. But it's a little more flexible. I think what we did this evening and last time, when the vote was five to four, it did send a message to the fire union. Hey, you're one vote from going down, guys. You better wake up, you're going to lose five. And I think they negotiated in good faith when they got the signal. It seems that the other union, from all the information I've received, I listened to the lady. I didn't agree with everything she said. I thought she had a lot of misinformation that she presented to this body. I don't want to call her a liar in public, but she sure was misinformed on some things. And the SE, the lady that came here, that blonde.
Christine Board.
Christine Board. I've negotiated, and weekly and I use to negotiate with her. But if we pass this tonight, the way Tina has it, appropriation by object, she'd still go back and negotiate with the union. Am I correct? So why don't we put this behind us tonight, vote for it, we're still not slamming the door shut, we're saying, "Hey, we mean business. We can't go on like this. We cannot go on like this." It needs to be done tonight. And one thing I liked about Alderman coming, it does bring a lot of good points up. And you know something, there? After we get done on different sides, we're still friends. We still have the best heart of the city. I think we all do, no matter how we vote here. We do have the best interest of the city. But sometimes you need to vote and move on. And I really think tonight we need to vote and move on. It shouldn't drag out anymore. The more it drags out, it's dollars spent, continue being spent, it's going to make it worse. And we need to get them back to the negotiating table. And I think if they come back, we'll be able to save some jobs.
Thank you, Alderman Tempest. Well, I think we're there. Okay, I will call the question and adopt the amended appropriation ordinance. Motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Moisio to adopt the appropriation ordinance as amended. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
I'm going to say no. I'm glad we amended the fire departments. You know, I support them and I'm glad that they're back. But I have to say no. The reasons of layoffs to the other people. Mayor, you mentioned a key word, and you mentioned trust. I'll be honest with you, in the last two weeks, I don't even know who to trust, to be honest with you. You know, if I confer with our appropriation, excuse me, our corporation attorney, I don't know if he's representing the city as a whole, or if he's representing you. I can't, I can't talk to anyone, you know, because of the lack of trust. So when you say trust, you got to earn my trust, because I don't even know who to believe here. Which makes it that difficult to make a sound decision. So, you know, I'm voting no.
Thank you, Alderman.
Based on the lack of trust. I think that's a very important word that you brought up. My vote is no.
Alderman Cunningham.
I vote aye, and thank you firefighters for coming to the table. Appreciate it.
Alderman Conken.
I also will join Alderman Rivera in voting no. I still want to see the SEIU group come to the table. From what I've seen, what's been presented to me from Tina, I'm a little disappointed in some of the demands being made and lack of negotiations that have occurred within the past couple of weeks. But I'd still like to give them another chance. My vote is no.
Alderman Moisio.
I'll vote aye, just like it was last week. That's a hard vote, anytime there's layoffs involved in something. But it's only because we are on life support. We have to do something now. We have to do something now. We have to keep the city running. We can't shut it down. My vote is aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
I vote no.
Alderman Newsom.
The ayes have it, the appropriation ordinance is adopted as of this evening.
Six.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We appreciate all the hard work that has gone into this, and I know that there was a lot of soul-searching to get to where we are tonight. All right, we will move on to Alderman's time. Wayne, if you could please start.
Alderman Tempest. Yes. I want to respond to, um, forced annexation. It's my job, as elected official, representing the city of Waukegan, to look out for the interests of the citizens of Waukegan and not isolated islands that really should be part of Waukegan. And the other comment, the gentleman attacked at me, he said his daughter, his daughter-in-law's a German lady, very sweet lady, married to a fireman, big sign in his yard. She calls me, I run. I come. She called the other day about a loose dog, I was there, and within a minute, took care of the problem. All I said was, "Your father-in-law doesn't like me." That's what I said. But I will always answer a call, no matter how, no matter what somebody does, my job is to represent you the best I can, and I always will. The other thing, the gentleman made a response, now you gotta remember, Mr. Burleson lives in the county, and he spoke about the Lake County Police got there in six to eight minutes. And then he mentioned Waukegan get there for 22 minutes. Well, why the heck would Waukegan answer a county call? I mean, maybe coming over to see, it's close to us, we'll check it out, but why would they answer it anyway? You know, that's another reason why, when you have the islands, it, it's a little more difficult, but the five numbers will tell you it's a county address. Some of you might not know that. And, uh, again, this evening, we had many viewpoints. I'm glad the appropriation ordinance is behind us. I want to thank the chief, I thought the fire chief, you know, the chief of police, or fair chief, or department head, you represent, uh, both sides. You can't be a good chief if you don't represent each other. You have to represent the city also, and I don't, Chief Young forgot that, he represented both sides, and he cared about his men, and we learned to give and take, and we appreciate that, and I know Chief Yancy does the same thing. And Tom Haggerty out of Public Works, you're developing a good team, Mayor. Again, uh, the aldermen, thank you for working together. We can all come together again, we're all friends, we all care about the city, and I think the mayor made a point. We're in this together, not just the mayor. We're all in this together, and yes, we need to develop trust, that we need to do, and that comes, sometimes it takes time. It, it doesn't happen overnight, I understand that. But thank you very much, and thank you all for voting for the appropriation, glad it's behind us. Alderman Needham.
Thank you. Um, I echo Alderman Tempest's sentiments about our vote tonight. That's why this is a democracy, that's why we sit and debate, and hold over, and discuss all the issues. And just so everyone knows, working with Tina and her staff the last couple of months, we still have a guarantee that they will continue to work to look to save money in the budget, work with the unions, and bring everyone on the table, and make the layoff issue as painless as possible. So that is still out there, and it always has been. As far as the comments, uh, about our police department covering, uh, calls in the county, um, it's my understanding that nine times out of 10, it's Waukegan guys covering the calls for the county, county sheriffs, waiting for them to get there. Um, I'm glad the man tonight had a quick response to his issue with the county, but the bottom line is, there's no one, and we all know that, no one better than our police department, fire department, our workers. Wish we could pay them as much as we could, but we have a confined budget we work in, and all our people, especially the police and fire, do one heck of a job, and they're, and we all know that no one in the state, there's not a better department here. We all know that. So, that's all I have to say, and thanks again.
Alderman Larson.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Burleson's comments, uh, aggravated, aggravated me as well. The reality is that our professional police and fire departments are second to none. For someone who doesn't live in the city, to cast backhanded compliments, more accurately an aspersion, about how they respond to a call that's handled by another department was unfortunate. He's speaking out of turn when he does that. And I will be more than happy to remind him of that next time he steps up here and does it again. Friday night, I had the privilege of observing our police department in action. There was a, uh, incident that's been publicized, but, you know, when our teams respond to a, a situation that is dangerous, it's, uh, reassuring to this alderman, who functions as chair of the Public Safety Committee, to know that these gentlemen and ladies, who are part of our police department and our fire department, um, really show up and show their stuff. I mean, it was a textbook example of how teamwork happens in a, in a situation. There's probably four or five different teams working together, different parts of that, different aspects of that, uh, situation, and it was eye-opening for this alderman to see a little bit of that and see how, uh, these guys coordinated. Chief, please pass on to all your people, that I was tremendously impressed and will always step up on their behalf. Thank you very much.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you all. I am going to ask, I hope that the SEI union and the city hopefully will come together and get some compromise on this. You know, we, we need it, uh, to save these jobs. Also, I, I wanted to, Mayor, I wanted to bring this up, uh, I know we, the council approved the liquor store over there on, uh, that's what I'm going to call it, liquor store over there at 7-Eleven, which I was totally against. Supposed to be, you know, more grocery than, uh, what it's looking like. It's been falling on deaf ears, I've been asking, I had asked about, can someone over there check and see if they're going according to the ordinance? I go there, and I see an electronic sign. I checked on it, uh, to see if they even got a permit for it. According to permit, it was non-electrical. Well, to me, that's electrical. Not only that, what they're advertising is liquor. They got a big sign. They're advertising liquor, Modelo, whatever. I checked with, uh, you know, our, uh, director of code compliance to look into it, to see if they even got a permit for it. I, I haven't got the response yet. I still have to talk to our, uh, Wendy, the vice administrator, about it, to see if they're actually checking to see. But it's just so arrogant, that's, that's what I can't stand, the arrogance of it all. And, uh, to me, it looks like a liquor store. Chips, that's not groceries. Salsa, you know, come on. So I just, like I said, the license that we have for that, are they going by the rules on that license? And I'm just, uh, you know, like I said, when I go through there and I see it, it's like they can do anything they want, without anybody checking to see if they're going according to, to the ordinance. Finally, I, I want to, uh, and I know, Tina, you've done a tremendous job, uh, you know, with all of this. I've learned so much in the last couple of weeks in regards to this, you know, the, the finance, the budget, just reading everything line by line, and yes, I know they're not expenditures, but really, I mean, it's, it's really, uh, a, a learning experience, no question about it. I wish I would have asked that line by line a long time ago, but I'm glad I got it and, uh, went through it. You know, there's some things, like I said, you know, we still need to, uh, you know, cut some of the items on there. Uh, I talked about postage, it's very high. I know we have to get our, our, uh, information out, uh, but as our city clerk said, we've had thousands of dollars returned in postage. You know, our, our managers, they, they have to manage their people a lot better, no question about it. I'm glad with the travel expenses, I seen that in there, on what we appropriated for, that's ridiculous. You know, talking about, uh, publications, I need clarification on publications. Uh, what's, what's that for? What are we talking about publications? Having Time Magazine or whatever it is, I, I need clarification on that. But like I said, it's been a learning experience, and, and I just wanted the people to know that we did not want to lay off people. I certainly don't. So, kind of like to say thank you, I'm not going to say thank you, because there's going to be some people laid off, families being hurt. I'm going to say thank you to that? That's, I can't do that. I'll say thank you for the, for work that the people have done, no question about it, but to stand up here and say thank you, see ya, no. You know, that hurts, so I can't, I can't say that, so, thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman Cunningham.
Uh, aye too. Uh, I'm glad that this, uh, appropriation issue was over. I voted my conscience, I thought, I voted in the best interest of the city of Waukegan. But I do like to echo what Alderman Rivera did say, uh, there are going to be some people who lose their jobs, there are going to be some people who have to go unemployment, tell their families, certain, something different, uh, things are going to change in our household. And that's difficult for me personally, to digest, for me to just go and tell folks. It's just, it's just hard, bottom line is hard. I think it's especially hard, because those people did nothing. They did nothing wrong, they did what we told them to do on a day-to-day basis. And you talk about trust, they trusted us. They trusted us to make the best decision, not only for the city, but for their lives and their families. And what's equally tough to digest is, a hundred percent of them folks are Waukegan knights. They live on our streets, they buy groceries in our neighborhoods. So when I see them around the block, it's going to be very difficult to look them in the eye, but I voted my conscience. But at the end of the day, I think this council did what they think was in the best interest, and I hope we can move on with the city's business, and we do that without passion or prejudice. Uh, second, don't know if many of you, uh, know this, but there was a young man who, uh, Waukegan knight, uh, grew up, uh, in our community, and is the nephew, uh, former Alderman Lucius Copeland. Um, it's sad to say that he had, uh, he was in a tragic accident that, uh, that led to his death, if I'm not mistaken, it was this past weekend. Mr. Mark Copeland, just well, well-liked young man, I mean, just, uh, everything that I think his parents wanted him to be, just untimely death is unfortunate, so please keep the Copeland family in your prayers. Ms. Jackson, former officer, sergeant, Michael Jackson's wife, city employee, uh, passed with a, a long bout, uh, of her illness. I think her service is going to be this Saturday, if I'm not mistaken, this Saturday. The Jackson family, I, I don't have to tell you what that meant, but for those who are listening in the, in the audience, Michael Jackson was a dedicated police officer of this community for many years. He's a Boy Scouts, uh, troop leader, served in his church as deacon, anything, he's just a nice, nice man with a, with a beautiful, beautiful wife. So please, keep your hearts and your prayers for the Copeland and Jackson families, and, uh, you know, let's move on with the city's business. Take care. Thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman Conken.
Yes, thank you. A couple of things, uh, commendations for the fire department, again, one, obviously, that's been mentioned here tonight already, we're getting together, the fire union, getting together with the chief and Tina, and arranging what I'm sure, what I'm hoping, that is something that we can both live with. Uh, I know that if one side was smiling, the other wasn't, that somebody actually prevailed, but with neither side smiling, hopefully it's just something that both sides can live with, and, uh, I think they've done a fine job, and I, I want to commend, like I said, the chief, Tina, and the fire union, and I, like I say, I hope that, uh, they give it their full consideration. I'd also like to commend the fire department, they answered the call, uh, to a fire out in my neighborhood a couple of weeks ago, up on McCary Road. Uh, I turned the corner and saw the street block with fire trucks, turned out to be a distant relative's house, and, uh, he just let his, uh, lunch go too long on the kitchen stove and started a fire in the kitchen. So, happy to see that the fire department got there very quickly and took care of the situation. Lastly, before we meet again, and matter of fact, next week, Sunday, I want everybody to keep in mind mom. It's Mother's Day, uh, I'm sure everybody's mom, uh, everybody got a special place in their heart for mom, so just go make sure you don't forget her, and so to all the women that are here and listening, Happy Mother's Day. Thank you.
Alderman Moisio.
Couple of things, uh, I want to make sure all the aldermen up here understand, I made a comment last time about a popular vote, I, I tried to clarify in the paper, but that wasn't meant that any alderman up here, uh, one thing about this council is every alderman speaks their mind, and I think we all respect each other at the end of the day, and we do speak our mind, but that comment was directed that I felt I had to be honest with the people. And like I've said over and over, we're on life support, and we had to get a fix now. There was no other choice. And I respect all the aldermen up here for all their questions and all their passion about everything, and no matter what I say about the layoffs, it's not, it's not going to, it's not going to help. So I'm not, I'm not going to say anything, there, everybody has said what they need to say about that, I'm not going to say anymore, because it's not, it, it's been said. Both of those, uh, I had the pleasure of coaching both of the Jackson family's boys, more the older one, just a great family, good people, uh, and I also coached, uh, Mark Copeland. Uh, and as a teacher, it's always hard, I've, I've buried a lot of students here in Waukegan, it's, it's difficult when you outlive your students. It's very difficult to go to funerals of students that you had, I, I've done it too often, more than I want to, uh, it's just, it's just very sad. Uh, and as everybody else has said up here, we need to get on with the business of the city, and like Alderman Tempest had said, I, I keep, I keep going back to the fact that when I took this office, I took an oath to the Constitution. And the Constitution represents the people, and I have to try to do the best job for all of the people as a whole. I can't try to separate, as hard as it is, and that's what happens, that's human nature, that's life, that's how I try to deal with it, is that I have to do what's right for the whole of Waukegan, and that's what I base my decisions on. Some people will like them, and some people won't, but you have to try to, at least I have to try to get that, so that I can keep going. have to try to get that, so that I can keep going and represent the people of Waukegan the best way I can. That's it.
Alderman Figueroa.
Thank you. I'd like to echo the comments about the Jackson family. I've known Michael Jackson for a number of years, and the only thing I could add, we worked very closely on so many projects with Boy Scouts, and for a person to be so positive about, just about everything in life, never, never heard one, one crossword coming from Officer, well, he's now retired, from Mike Jackson, just, and his family. It was just a real sweetheart family, had a pleasure of knowing the family very closely. So my hearts and prayers goes out to the family. As far as the layoffs and the appropriation budget, it's really tough to balance, and I know all the staff's been working really hard, coming with the balanced budget. We don't know what the state's doing. I don't think the state knows what they're doing. And I don't say this to take a jab at the state. It's, you would think that they would be able to come up with a budget, but they extended the last year's budget for a couple of months, and they went on vacation without having an appropriations budget. But I'm concerned about, but not only the jobs that potentially could be lost, I was hoping that we'd be able to stick it out one more year, but like I said last meeting, we can't continue to borrow money to make, to make ends meet. That's a tough thing to do. But when we look at the future of this city, and we can't lose vision of what we want to do on the lakefront. Potentially, we're looking at $2 billion in apartments, in living condominiums, single-family units on the lakefront, that would expand our tax base, not only for the city, but for the school board. You think we have problems? The school board is gonna be much worse than what we're gonna be going through. And I wanted to make sure that with the economic development, that we continue to look at that vision of Waukegan, of where we're gonna be five to 10 years from now. That's it, Your Honor.
Alderman Newsom.
I think everything's been said, so with that, I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. All in favor? Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you, everybody up here, for your hard work tonight. I appreciate it.